To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you call me a fraudster?
Thank you.
Mr. Metrick.
I give you one.
Sit down. Thank you. If you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Weisberg, Ms. Rickards.
Here.
Ms. Pananopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Mr. McGreevy is absent. Ms. Teblin-Moffett.
Present.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
President Aaron Meader.
Here. Thank you. I have no comments. Ms. Mayor?
Just a couple. I have the crime statistics for the month, and things seem to be pretty stable, so I'm going to hand those in.
Great.
If you could take that, just press that in. Just a couple brief comments. I just want to give a congratulations and a thank you to Officer McCabe for so quickly responding. There was a terrible accident on Montgomery Avenue this Monday night, and Officer McCabe was there immediately, along with some Marionian officers, and I just wanted to give thanks for taking such good care of the folks involved. And that reminds me, speaking of that accident, the speed limit top is 25 in Norbert, and please, that's a pretty slow speed. Let's keep it to that, and stay safe for all pedestrians and other drivers on the road. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move to the presentation on 650 Montgomery Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Norbert, council members. Fred Frommhold, attorney for the applicant in this particular application, and we're here tonight just to inform you, to kick off, if you will, this application. We've filed a land development application, approval for tentative sketch plan approval. We also, in connection with the application, have a special exception request that we'll be presenting next week to the zoning hearing board in connection with the minimum frontage requirements as they apply to the property, and we're looking forward to doing that as well. So without further discussion or presentation from me, I'd like to introduce Adam Rosenzweig, who can tell you a little bit about himself. He is working on this project for and on behalf of and with Metropolitan Management. Scott Fagan is an individual, principal of Metropolitan Management, may be familiar to many of you. They're a significant stakeholder, property owner in Norbert borough, and this is the property at the corner of Meeting House in Montgomery Avenue, where Obrex Nurseries has been located for a number of years now. This property was originally the subject of approval over twenty years ago, I believe, where the Obrex center that had been there for many years was approved and located. There is a Rite Aid pharmacy that is on this property. Adam will tell you a little bit about that and how that wraps into this particular application. So, Adam?
Thank you, Fred. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Adam Rosenzweig with Axiom Really. I'm the development partner with Metropolitan Management and Scott Fagan, as he mentioned, on the project here at 650 East Montgomery Avenue. As you know, Metropolitan is a Norbert-based company with two existing properties in Norbert. We are not merchant developers and builders. We are here for the long stay. We take pride in what we deliver and build and maintain in the long run. As part of this project here, we have preliminarily gone out to meet with what we deem our stakeholders in this project. So we've had two informal meetings with the Norbert Planning Commission prior to this evening. We've also met with the head of the Civic Association, as well as having sent letters to the nine property owners who have bought our project to let them know that something will be coming down the pipe to sit down with them informally. To date, we've met with four of them, have a fifth meeting scheduled, and of the four people that we have not met with, one of the homes just closed for sale ten days ago, two other ones are under contract for sale as we speak, and the fourth person we've yet to gain contact with. So with all that feedback that we've had, we've taken careful consideration into this project. Our goal here is to transform today what is considered Albrex Greenhouse, 22,500 square feet of yard and sale area, into a mixed-use development, which will be comprised of 25 apartment units or approximately 19,000 square feet of retail. And with that, the Rite Aid building that is here today remains intact, and the majority of the property also remains intact as it stands today. From the feedback that we elicited from our meetings, we've taken careful consideration to make sure that this property has many walkways, and it's not only pedestrian-friendly, but friendly to bicycles as well. We're aware that there is a master plan in some parts, phases right now, that is under consideration for Meeting House down into the heart of Norbert that we plan to participate in and make sure our property is a part of. As you can see from this overlay here, the orange are the new walkways that we will install in the property. So as you come down Meeting House, none exists here today. We would bring people in, cross over through the property. This would be one side of the building that would then connect into the Rite Aid and then back down to the sidewalk on Montgomery. Similarly, if you're coming up this side of the sidewalk, we would have, due to the grade, a nice AVA ramp that would get people into, call it a terrace area, that would front Meeting House, that would also wrap around the building and connect back into these two sidewalks. We plan for our residents to have an indoor bike route as well as an outdoor bike rack, and we're looking for a location for a second one on the property today. With this, you'll see some shading here of 16 parking spaces. These parking spaces were originally approved as part of the 1998 development plan. They were held in reserve, and part of our plan here is to activate these spots. By also shrinking the footprint of the existing Outbreaks, we're able to add in additional parking spaces here. So at the end of the day, we're essentially adding one parking space for each residential unit that we're putting up top in the building. The rest of it will pretty much remain untouched, and that is the very quick synopsis of our project.
Council members, questions?
So along Meeting House, there are a tremendous amount of trees and slope up to Norbert.
Yes.
Will you keep those trees intact or will you have to go?
Great question. The trees that are there now, the majority of them will be coming down. In order to develop this, as you know, there's a pretty significant grade there. And to do it, we will have to put in a retaining wall, which is part of our special exception zoning hearing for next week for that. And to do that, the trees that are along there will most likely come out.
And my follow-up is, the green that is on this map is the existing foliage and not anything that you'll be adding because it's not directly on your property?
Well, everything you see in green is our property. It's a mix. So there's a berm and a buffer zone that exists here today. There's obviously the slope and the side yard that exists today. This is showing some shading trees. This isn't a color-coded map of what stays and what goes. We are working right now with a landscape architect to work on a redesign of how we can put back landscape. We've also reached out to the Shade Tree Commission to solicit their input. We've not yet connected with them, but I've tried a few times to work with them as well.
Do we have council members?
And Eric's question next.
So as I understand your presentation, the footprint of the new building is going to be approximately the same as the footprint as the existing building there now?
Yes, but smaller. So let me show you one more left, may I? The way that it looks today is the building exists here today, and this is the yard. So this area here encompasses 22.5. We're actually pushing the building back here, and it'll come out no further than approximately here.
So Cindy, these are the trees you're...
These are the trees you were talking about, right?
No, actually, on Meeting House...
She referred...
On Meeting House, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about...
There's some huge old beautiful trees there. So as you know, we have stormwateration there. So I wonder if, when you work with the Shade Tree Commission and your landscape artists, if there's any way that you could replace those trees in other places on the property?
We are looking into that right now.
Yeah, I mean, as part of sort of all of the layers of land development that...
If you could, could you do me a favor and put this picture next to this sketch for just a second?
Sure.
Sure. So we talk about this, right? We see this?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't... Right, because you're saying this isn't a color-coded version, and I understand that. But in the sketch, will these remain? Will these trees remain on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's not a redevelopment of the entire site.
Yeah, I got it.
It's just what we consider to be sort of all bricks around the yard.
I just don't see Swift calling me.
Yeah. No.
Screaming about those trees.
No, there's... And I've met with these neighbors back here already about it. We're looking into adding some additional buffer zone features in there already.
Okay. This is just slightly peripheral. So many years ago, there was a plan for that section of Meeting House Lane to have it... This has nothing to do with your project, but to have a divided median in the Meeting House Lane at the intersection of Montgomery Avenue and Meeting House Lane. And the idea was to create some traffic coming, and also because it's such a long way across Meeting House Lane from the southwest corner to the southeast corner, it's a long, long crosswalk. The idea was to break it up with kind of a place that people could be safe in.
A central island.
A central island in the median of Meeting House Lane.
A Meeting House.
Here.
Yeah, and that would slow... The idea was to slow traffic. And it was studied by a traffic engineer, and it was drawn, and it was proposed, and it was like sort of one, an idea that we held as one of the traffic coming scenarios. So here's my thought. If for some reason you guys need plate space to replace landscape that's really mature and very beautiful along Meeting House Lane there, you know, that would be an opportunity to add some impervious and, you know, landscape feature. So I just wanted to put it out there, you know, and it's not...
Let's float that out there as has previously been considered. Obviously, there's a zillion details as to how that could happen and how it would work with our land development process, but it's an interesting idea because it's outside of your envelope, so maybe it could be part of this.
So I'm so glad you brought this up.
This was 14 years ago, when I started hounding council about Iona being a Speedway. So we have a traffic study from 14 years ago that Bill Martin ordered that recommended a mid-block greenway as a welcome to Norbert as a traffic cop.
It was a gateway.
It was a gateway, Norbert.
It was a safer pedestrian, slowed car. So it had many multimodal features.
So we had that.
We'll find it. We will dig it up. Sean knows where to dig. He knows where it's all buried.
No, I don't. On the record, I do not.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sure I will.
All right, we'll now move to public comment. If any members of the public would like to comment on any topic, now is your time to do so, starting all the way in the rear. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Natalie Wren, and I'm the director at MELC in Norbert. And I'm here, for those of you who don't know, just to talk a little bit about MELC. We are a nonprofit organization. The Norbert location serves nearly 200 children. We have a very diverse background in our enrollment as well as our staff. And I just wanted to kind of show my gratitude for the partnership that we have with the borough. Last summer, we received a letter letting us know that the council approved the five-year capital improvement plan, which we are very excited about. It will help to alleviate the safety issue of the roof, and I just wanted to express my gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving down the line, last row, second to last row, 114, we're in the fifth row. Coming up, Ms. Fortner, anything, Jim?
All right, I will close public comment. We'll move to action items. 7A. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that Borough Council approved the minutes at the May 1st, 2019 workshop meeting, and May 15th, 2019 business meeting of Borough Council.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve scheduled bills?
I move that Borough Council approved scheduled bills of the general highway, sewer, and solid lease funds, and offer us Borough Manager to pay all bills.
Seconded, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to move to 7D. I'll come to C next. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution for 1016?
I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2019-016, approving the final plan for the property located at 114 Forest Avenue, or the attached...
Is there a second to put this on the table?
A second, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, discussion, Mr. Metrick or Mr. Walco, whomever you think that's good. Give us a quick summary of where we are in the process.
Thank you. I'm happy to take it.
And we also have our Borough Engineer in the room today to review the final plan document. So...
Okay, great. So as council has seen over the last couple months, there are multiple stages of the land development process. There is the tentative sketch plan, there is the preliminary plan, and then finally there is the final plan that is submitted. The final plan that will be submitted will be a plan that will be recorded and will be how this building is built, and it's supposed to have sufficient detail for a proper review of our Borough Engineer to make sure that the building is built to our codes and to state federal codes. That was the plan that was submitted, subject to any additional comments and conditions that we imposed. You've seen the preliminary plan, and a month or so ago, we approved the preliminary plan for this project. All those conditions still remain for the final plan, that it has to comply with the Fire Marshal's review letter, with the Shade Tree provisions, with the most recent reviews of the final plan by both Yerkes for zoning and for Borough Engineer for any engineering aspects. The Norbert Planning Commission did review and did recommend approval with conditions that are incorporated to what our conditions would be for this plan. So that was the change in the preliminary plan. I believe the applicant has met with the planning commission and has addressed some of the issues that they had regarding the wall covering the stairway and the stairs intruding into the right-of-way, as you may recall, which came up during the conditional use hearing. I believe those have been satisfied to the planning commissions, satisfactorily satisfying the planning commission. So if this plan is approved, they can then proceed to finalizing the plan, recording the plan. They would then be entering into land development agreements with the borough, which will control posting of financial security to make sure that the improvements, the public improvements that they need to install are there, and there's financial security for those in case they belly up. And they recall that last month, we released some for another development. And that the construction demolition is done appropriately under our codes, taking note of sort of coordinating the other projects and the ability to make sure that the streets and sidewalks remain passable for businesses and for residents due to the location, that they will need to pay all the necessary fees and costs associated with the plan. But they will then be able to proceed to get their building permits and put the shovel in the ground. So I guess we can maybe hear from the applicant when they would expect that to occur. So again, this is the next step from the preliminary plan. If there's any questions, technical questions, I turn it over to the Borough Engineer. I don't believe there are any additional waivers that have been requested for the final plan. So without, are there any questions?
Are you satisfied?
I am satisfied. The only comments I had left in my review letter are really just very technical details of the plans. Making sure of some of the construction details, some of the notes we need that are on there. But there's really no structural changes or real alterations that may be done to the proposed plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a question. At what point is the agreement made with the applicant and the borough regarding terms of construction, the things that have to be required during construction?
They will have to enter into that agreement, and it will have to be recorded before or contemporaneously with the recording of the plan. So the plan, and they can't start constructing until that plan is recorded. Now, the borough may issue a permit here or there, but the actual heavy work, the plan will need to be recorded. So that will be in place. There will also be an agreement to maintain in perpetuity the stormwater management facilities that will be on the property as well. They also will be recording a new deed that will consolidate the two properties into one lot. I think that was some comments that were received. And any other declarations? If they are going to be going into a right-of-way, part of the conditional use requirement was that they report a declaration or an agreement that allows us the ability to remove that if we needed to. And if there's anything that they need to dedicate to the borough, that would all be done and approved by my office or by the Borough Engineer.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Walco or our engineer at this point? Then I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity, if they have any comments or anything that they'd like to add, nothing that's necessary.
I think somebody just raised the question. I'm going to start. We're in the... I'm Bob Kagan, by the way, if you're filming this, but we're not exactly sure. Some of them may be weather-dependent. We're starting probably next week, detailed discussions with the architect and beginning to pick. We have a... We're down to two for our contractor. We could potentially start in November with the demolition, but we're not really sure. It could move into the early, late winter, early spring next year.
I should say, it would be useful for the record that the changes that we made to the plan be summarized prior to the vote.
Let me just ask one follow-up question, Mr. Kagan. Once construction begins, do you have an anticipated timeline for how long it will take to complete construction?
We're told 12 to 14 months.
And that's your point, Mr. Walco. Could you summarize?
I think probably Mr. Yon would be in the best position to summarize the technical changes to the plan. Sorry to interrupt that.
Since we last saw it, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Chris Yonell. It's the engineer working on the project.
You are.
I am. For the most part, we just addressed the various reviews that we had from the Borough Engineer, the zoning officer, the Shade Tree Commission, Montgomery County Planning Commission, Norbert Planning Commission. But I think the meat of those really had to do with, there were some walls along Windsor Avenue that they were higher than three feet, and they were hiding a door that was an entry to the garage level. That didn't meet code. And so we moved that door from facing Windsor to now going out to the side, so we no longer need higher walls. Now those walls are a maximum of 30 inches each, which is permitted by code. The other thing that we did was, as we looked back through everything and, you know, the steps going into the right-of-way on Forest Avenue, which the planning commission wasn't happy with, what we did was, we increased the length and slope of the ramp down to the garage, so that we could lower the garage level by three feet. And what that allowed us to do was, once the garage was lowered, then the first floor residential level was also lowered, and it reduced the number of steps. So out of the four locations where there were steps towards Forest Avenue, three of those are only either one step or two. They're totally outside of the right-of-way. They're facing the right-of-way, which is how you elect them to be. The last set of steps, we showed the planning commission two different ways. And one was for them to be sideways and only be 30 inches wide, and they would not go into the right-of-way, so that would meet code. They'd have no objection, although the 30 inches obviously isn't ideal. If we turn the steps and face the right-of-way, our projection into the right-of-way is now only three inches. And the planning commission was happy that we now have two things. One is it's only three inches. It's not as far as those other landscape walls, so the landscape walls block them. They wouldn't be an obstruction. And also the fact that we have an alternative, that if for some reason the borough wasn't happy with the three-inch projection, they could be removed, they could be replaced with the ones turned 90 degrees, and everything would meet code and be fine. So I think those were the main points.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to speak on behalf of council and to thank all of you for being very creative. I know you iterated many times on that design on Forest Avenue, but I think we got a result. Thank you.
President Meader, would you mind if I briefly said something before we vote?
Go ahead.
You know, early on, I was definitely more critical of this project than my colleagues. And I just want to say, I was really impressed with the changes that the developer made based on the input of my colleagues and borough staff and the planning commission. And I want to thank the developer and echo what Aaron just said, and I'm going to be supportive tonight.
Okay. Any further discussion?
The parking spaces remain the same, though. Based upon the slope, the change?
That's correct.
You didn't have to get rid of any parking spaces as a result of the slope?
Correct. The slope didn't go into the parking... I will say that we had some tandem parking spaces, which were not counted towards our requirement, that we did get rid of, but they weren't counted towards the requirement. They were a bonus. And with the changes and pushing back from Windsor, that, and the length just wasn't long enough. Now, the positive of that was, we took that extra area, and that's now for the bike storage, which there were some concerns about the bike storage being a little tight, and although it was there, it might be tough to get into, now we have more room for that.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? Other questions? All in favor of approving the final plan for 114 Forest Avenue? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There are none. It is unanimous. Thank you. I'll move to 7C. Can I get a motion from the Finance and Administration?
I move that Borough Council were the contractor to replace the roof at 201 Devine Avenue. It's a Pango Construction Incorporated, lowest responsible bidder for the project per the attached tagulation.
A second, ma'am.
Okay, now we have it on the table. Mr. Metrick, can you give us some background on the process?
Can we just say thank you?
Yes.
To the council and to the Borough Planning Commission for giving us the opportunity to produce what we believe is going to be a good addition to our town. We'll be here, and we're going to own it for a long time, and we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Can you give us some background on our roofing bid?
Well, where would you like me to start? I guess it started about a year ago with our facilities and grounds assessment that pointed out a construct, repair, reconstruction option that was a little more tenable in terms of what it would cost. And that was a modified roof beef design, which reduced the cost. That would be applied over the entire campus, all of the roofs that are up there on the campus, and then a full total replacement down to the deck of the roof that is over the three-story education facility. So that was in the capital improvement program, approved last July by council. We didn't... We started to work with Ed Mangold from KCBA Architects to develop those plans. We got those plans in the springtime because we knew we weren't going to be able to do this work until... The weather had to be above a certain temperature, or the adhesives don't work. So we knew it was going to be a 2019 project. So fast forward to May's business meeting. Council approved the bid package we advertised. We advertised it. We had several bidders come out to our pre-bid meeting on site. We had three bids submitted last Wednesday. We had our bid opening last Wednesday. Ed Mangold reviewed those bids and submitted the recommendation for the lowest qualified bidder to council. He is available by phone as well to answer any questions, if you want to dial him up.
What is the general sense? Would we like to get Ed on the phone? Technical questions?
We're just approving the low bidder, right?
That's right. Sounds like we're comfortable. Okay. So could you give us a little more about the exact amount that we budgeted and where these bids came in?
The capital improvement program has a $515,000 line item in it, which covers contingencies in project management. The construction portion, the actual dollars going to the contractor for their work, the base... for their work, the base bid was estimated at $460,000. We had the lowest qualified bidder at 450. The second-place bidder was 457. The third-place bidder was significantly higher, $614,000.
So the lowest bidder is Panico, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion, questions? All in favor of approving the bid for Panico Construction for the roof at 201 Sabine Avenue?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. We'll move to 8A. Mr. Manager, do you have additional items to report?
I do. Thank you. Just give me a second. We spoke, I spoke a little at length about the financials at the finance and administration committee. I'm going to refer anyone who wants to really dive into the manager's report at the end of the meeting package. But we're about getting near the halfway point of 2019, so it's important that we start looking at how expenditures and incomes are tracking against budgeted income and expenditures. And to summarize us, summarize on the income side, I think we're going to, the general fund's going to be tracking around 2% above projected revenue, which is good news. There's increased revenue and due transfer taxes. We're going to do a little bit better than we, than we expected. We've done a little bit better than expected on street opening permits. We're going to book a ton of grant reimbursements for the bridge because the grant reimbursement agreement was just ratified and put in place. So we get to submit those invoices from, going back to May 2018. So that's good news. We have a number of positive revenue figures and assuming, the only variables left on the revenue side are business privilege tax, which is tracking ahead of where it was last year at this date, and the collection, the total collections of real estate taxes, which are still about 2% uncollected in your tax collector's report, but we expect to get that before year's end. That's roughly $60,000 at this point. Your May financials don't reflect that because the deadline is June 1. So we've got a lot of payments at the end of May. We didn't deposit those until June. You'll see it hit the budget versus actual report at next month's council meeting. That's the good news. The concerning news are some of the expense items that are trending above what we budgeted, and I'll summarize them quickly for you. Borough engineering fees are going to be above what we budgeted because of the extra work that we're doing with the vertical shielding project on Norbert Avenue Bridge. We think that's going to drive expenses anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 above budgeted amounts for the year. Traffic engineering fees, fees likewise for the same reason, are going to be about $5,000 to $10,000 above budgeted amounts, depending on how much more we cycle through with the traffic engineer on that particular item. We've had some significant repairs in this building to the HVAC system, and we're still looking at some more repairs that we have to do. We have bacteria in our cooling system water, which is something you don't want in your cooling system water. And a couple of other problems that we've had. Also, our fire panel had to be replaced and some of the, the smoke units had to be replaced. So we're about $5,000 to $8,000 above budget for maintenance repair. Municipal buildings, similarly, at the library building, we are for the same types of reasons, HVAC and fire detection. We're about $6,000 to $10,000 above budgeted amounts on those items. The big number on this list that's trending above average is police legal counsel. This is ongoing contract negotiations with the FOP and grievances are adding anywhere from $30,000 to $35,000 to this expense above the $20,000 that we budgeted. So we're at, we're going to be at about 210%, 250% of budget on that particular line item. There's two major decisions that are coming down the pipe that are going to major, still have major impacts on the borough's expenses for this year. That's our borrowing to fund our capital plan. We'll have some decisions for you to consider at next month's meeting. And the resolution of police labor contract. We have a July 2 executive session with, between FOP and borough council and the arbitrator to hopefully settle the matter. And we can move on and move on with the terms and conditions that make both sides equally happy and equally upset.
So honest.
So that's, that's a snapshot of financials. We'll be getting more of this information. It'll be a regular occurrence as we start to trend towards budget season, and we'll be starting to talk about budget by the end of the summer. There's five active land development projects in the borough. The one you heard about tonight, the other one, you just passed the final plan resolution on. 100 Forest and 203 Haverford, Ricklands, and the gas station, they're submitted final plans for approval. And we have a minor subdivision at 308 Chestnut Avenue that'll be coming before you shortly. That applicant is looking for a waiver of tentative sketch plan, which seems, it's not a decision I'm making, but it's a decision council can make under the advisement of the engineer and zoning officer, but it seems a reasonable thing to ask since they're turning a very small lot into two lots, and it's really just about drawing a line on the map and getting two compliant lots out of that.
Turning one small lot into two smaller lots?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and.
Too small of a compliant lots.
Too small of a compliant lots. And just so you know.
So when you say small, you mean they're generally small, not the initial small lot of compliance?
For a, no, a general narrow lot in.
Understood. Thank you.
And just for your information.
It's just less big. Right.
For your information, council will not be seeing or approving plans for a new residential unit on the new lot because that doesn't qualify as land development. A one, one unit construction would just go directly to the zoning officer for building permit approval. But we'll keep you apprised of that. Two other major things that I just want to put on your radar that are coming are preparations are underway for the solid waste collection disposal service bid. Notice I added the word disposal in. We have a lot of other variables to consider as we do this the second time around. And we are planning and putting a plan in place to advertise, interview, and hire for a vacant position in the public works department very soon.
I have a couple of questions, but I'll let council members go first if you have any on the report. For solid waste, could you, for the public's benefit and our own, give us just a few lines of how we're doing it differently this time? Three years ago, we put together, we have a bid process that was probably 90%, similar to how we had done it for the past 20 years.
Well, I, in some ways, it's going to be entirely different, and in basic ways, it'll be just the same. What we're really looking for is the basic service to the resident for the collection, transport, and then disposal of, of waste. And really what, what our customers and citizens care about is clean, efficient, and accurate collection. And we'll be worrying about some of the other details, where it gets disposed, what the financials look like, where is it going, what does this customer service look like, what sorts of waste streams can be processed by what sorts of handlers, what sorts of innovations can be added to the, and what have we learned over the last three years, three point, for me, five years with the prior contractor, this new contractor, and what has Matt learned? And Ed, Ed has been Chris in now almost a year dealing with our present situation. So we have a lot of variables to consider, residential, commercial issues, how the, how the revenue is generated, the fundamentals of that. So it's, it's complex. We're going to look at every detail and address as many of them as we can in this process. But the, our big Mount Rushmore goal is to get really good, high-quality service to, to our citizens. Quick, accurate collection services.
Do you have a question?
Well, a question that I'll just read, or because I asked this at FNA, particularly I asked the office, Sean, that when we are writing up in preparation for the bid, that we underscore our commitment to recycling. I've had many citizens sending us videos of our current handler just throwing recycling in with general waste. And I think it needs to be communicated that we're a municipality that cares very deeply about accurate recycling. The other is that brush pickup still continues to be an issue. I know we got the bill of what an additional pickup would be during spring, summer, fall, and it was $17,000.
Substantial.
It was substantial. We weren't able to do that. Additionally, inquiring about compost, which Sean said he wasn't sure if that could be in this bid, but we can really rely on Ed Harmon, who has done this in previous places. And then I would add just, really, what is the communication and support? You know, under our current system, your trash doesn't get picked up. You call a company, you press a number, and they don't know where Norbert is. And I think that needs to also be in part of our next contract, is a clear understanding of communication and support.
Thank you. I have one other small point or question for you, Sean. You, we just talked about, essentially, first, a large amount of borrowing to consolidate different things. And you had also mentioned that some items were over budget. Do you have a plan to transfer appropriate capital expenditures, some engineering costs into that borrowing?
No.
Or do you plan to let it ride out in this year's?
No. We budgeted around $62,000 for new borrowing in this fiscal year, which means you can, you'll have some options. That, that's about a $5,000 a month payment. You can borrow a lot of money over a 20-year term and pay $5,000 a month on it. Or you can borrow more money, chunk it into a shorter amount of time, spend the $62,000 this year, but what you will have done in doing that is front-loaded next year's budget with a very substantial debt service payment, because you won't be paying it for, for just five months. You'll be paying it for 12. So we're going to go back and look at the, that debt portfolio that I talked about at last meeting and make sure that we don't, don't, it's not an ATM machine. We can't go and, and borrow. We have to, we have to make sure we have room to do things in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a report?
I have my report. Mr. Managers, the police sent an email out regarding the council's desire or non-desire to send a solicitor out to a special exception. Is that something that would need to be discussed tonight, or is that something that's scheduled for the zoning hearing board?
I think it should be discussed tonight if that's council's desire. Thanks for bringing that up.
We can talk about that under new business.
That's the only thing I would have to report.
All right. Thank you. Monthly reports have been filed. Any comments for the board of council?
I, I just have one, just council members, just to be aware that, especially chairs of committees, that many issues overlap the domain of each of the committees. So if you know that you're dealing with an issue that has an overlapping, then you just communicate informally with the chair of the other committee so that that can be understood by all the members of the committees. That's all. It's not, it's not a request to change anything about our agenda meetings, just about, I mean, get more, especially when you're aware that your issue crosses.
Seems like that has been happening more frequently with the condensed committees.
Yeah, it works. Yeah. It's fine. It's just, let's just keep talking.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. New business. We can talk about, Mr. Walco, the zoning hearing board recommendation.
Yes, the, the applicant that you just heard from that submitted tentative sketch plan for 615 Montgomery Avenue, as was mentioned during the presentation, needs to appear before the zoning hearing board for a special exception. You may remember there were ordinance changes that were made, and there's discussions whether something should be conditional use, a special exception. One of the things that they're seeking special exception approval for is whether or not a police to be able to develop this property with more of a condensed frontage of Montgomery Avenue. And then the other issues pertaining to the height of the retaining wall, testified as to the walkway and the slope at the intersection of Meeting House and Montgomery. A special exception is akin to a conditional use, the hearing that you went through, although it's held by the zoning hearing board. So it is not a variance. They're not asking for something that the code doesn't provide. It's more that these issues are matters that the code felt should be looked at closely to make sure that they are being followed and developed. For example, if someone is putting in a wall, you want to make sure that that wall is something that the borough would like to see, or that the zoning hearing board would like to see, have a little more control over it. At a zoning hearing, council has the option of opposing an application, staying neutral, or supporting an application. In order to take any such action except for neutral, there should be a formal approval by borough council. So I believe in July, there is a zoning hearing board, hearing scheduled for that special exception approval. I believe that the borough would like to know whether or not we'd like to send the solicitor's office on behalf of council on that application.
So remember to look more detail.
You have questions, right?
I figured.
So my question, so with the, with the conditional use, there's conditions attached to any table and cap and, it's not so reasonable. And I'm wondering, with special exception, are there, does the zoning hearing board impose specific conditions, or can they, can they impose requirements?
They, they can. And generally, they, they do. Only it's complied with testimony and exhibits. Unlike the conditional use approval, which is usually for an entire project, where the use, special exception is very narrowly tailored towards specific items oftentimes, which is the case here.
It's the retaining wall.
For example, if there was a, it was really important that retaining wall be made of a type of material, that would be something that maybe you'd like to ask that that condition be imposed. Or the zoning hearing board, we can make recommendations on that as well.
So.
Yeah.
It might be helpful to break this conversation into two pieces. One is to talk about the frontage, and the other is to talk about the retaining wall. Why don't we start with the frontage? Because I feel like that might come off the table more quickly.
So essentially, the, the code allows that the minimum frontage along Montgomery Avenue can be reduced by 50%. So when the, the code was originally drafted, the idea was they would like Montgomery Avenue, the buildings to front Montgomery Avenue, that there'd be more of the building along Montgomery Avenue. This building is more along Meeting House and less along Montgomery Avenue. And that's because they have, they share this, the ingress and egress with the ride aids. They weren't able to move along Montgomery Avenue. In order to get that special exception approval, there were a number of conditions, this was in the ordinance that was recently enacted, that they have to fulfill. All those conditions being drafted by the planning commission. For example, you saw the sidewalk connections there? That was a result of the, they would have to do those sidewalks in order to get that special exception approval per the code. They have to replace any trees, I think a one-for-one ratio per, per the code. So these are things that they would have to meet regardless in order to get that special exception. But essentially, if you, if you don't mind the way that that building fronted Montgomery Avenue, there really wouldn't be a need to object to that or to take any action on it.
I mean, given that the landscape's pretty mature already, I mean, as it was done 20 years ago, and all of the landscape design that was done at that time is now matured and it's, it's kind of grown out, and they're going to disrupt some of that all on Meeting House in order to rebuild. If they, if they need more space for, to replant, to meet the requirement, the replanting requirement, I'd like us to ask if they would build a median on, on Meeting House like that.
I was, I was.
For the, for the purpose of replanting the displaced landscape that they're, that they're removing. And, and maybe it's, it's, it's theirs to rebuild, or maybe it's something we do together.
I'm not, I don't know if we can impose that as a condition, but.
I don't either. I'm just asking.
But I, but I was wondering, given the, the, the trees create a canopy on Meeting House, if a reasonable, if a reasonable condition to build this higher retaining wall would be to replace the trees within a certain distance from the existing trees so that they maintain the same shade canopy. So they can't be just replace one to one in the old place on the lot, but they must be within a radius or distance of the existing trees. Is that a condition that could probably reasonably impose?
I think that would be something that you could advise the zoning hearing board that council would like to see because of that requirement of the, of the true replacement, to have a little more level of control over that. Whether or not that's able to be done on the plan, I don't know.
Maybe if they talked to us about a median, that would make it easier.
I was just pointing out.
You could split the baby sometimes.
Because this is a special exception, we don't have the opportunity.
Right.
In this process to bring in the developer, sort of horse trade, right? It's going to go to the zoning hearing board. So the clearest thing we can do is give them ideas, things we're looking for, and sort of a general sense of how we feel about it, and then trust them to hear our advice.
And that's the intent mine, Ken, is that. And that's the intent mine, Ken, is that we, that's something we would like to see. That helps them accomplish their, meet their requirement.
Again, the plan will go through the same land development plan phase as the other projects, again, that I believe is on the agenda for tentative plan approval in July. We'll go through preliminary plan approval. As we've discussed, you can't just throw anything you want on there if it's not in our code. I'm not sure if our traffic safety engineers will say, hey, an island here is a good idea, or you don't want an island there based upon my opinion.
It already exists, it's on the product.
So if that is something that the professionals say this needs to be done as part of the land development plan, they're probably going to have to comply with those requirements. In fact, all of the standard resolutions that we've passed say comply with the recommendations of the engineer, of those traffic engineer, traffic engineer.
So there's, there's going to be a motion to do something. I think I'm seeing general consensus that for the frontage, the request would be approval and a suggestion if the shade trees could be replaced in the general area that we discussed, or that, you know, the possibility of a median be discussed further with that.
But we can't move this to conditional use.
No.
No, no. So for just the information to the public, we're talking about where the hillside is. So if you're on Meeting House and you're standing at Bob's and you're looking across to that property, Albar's property, there is a fence there, there is a little hill, and there's a sidewalk there. And I think what we're talking about, we say retaining wall, it's going to be how long and how high, just for the public's information. Thank you.
Mr. Walco?
So the code says that no fence or wall may be higher than three feet in the first block layer, but you can obtain special exception approval to increase that. And I believe they're looking for a 10-foot-high retaining wall in the corner of Montgomery Avenue in Meeting House Lane. And that's due to the difference in elevation between the property frontage and the proposed building elevation. So again, they testified as to the sidewalk and the ADA accessible ramp, that would kind of go, leave around that.
So I'm going to, I'm just going to offer a little makeshift drawing here.
Sure, okay.
To.
Just to put perspective, that's for sale.
This is, this is the corner, this is Montgomery Avenue. Okay.
It's an oblique, it's the other. It's an oblique angle, it's not a.
No, no, this is the building here.
If I could say so.
The angle goes the other way.
Okay.
You draw the angle and I'll draw the sidewalk.
It makes a difference, because, because, being part of the reason so much the facade is going on Montgomery is because Meeting House goes to half.
He said these are the same, right?
No.
It depends on where you're standing.
Give it a go. All right. So there is going to be a sidewalk here, right? This is cars. And they are planning to put a retaining wall, which I will indicate with dots, basically up against the sidewalk, because the grade is such that either one half of the building needs to be buried at one end, or one half has to be, okay. So I know where you're going. But because of the requirement that they had these walkways, there will also be another sort of terrace-level walkway here. This is going to be more open and sort of have maybe some seating and other, so there's sort of two parallel sidewalks. One would be, I have no interest in this property, I'm going to take this route, and the other would be, I maybe do have some interest in shopping in one of these stores, and I sort of divert onto this higher sidewalk. And when I get to the end, here, it's 10 feet. That's the highest, the highest point. So when I'm here, it's, you know, two feet, one feet. Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Johnny?
If you'd like to take a.
There's a list, just like, essentially a list of criteria that they would have to need to be granted this special exception, right?
For the minimum frontage, yes.
But not for the retained, there's no criteria for the retaining wall?
I'm not sure if under the code there's any specific criteria.
I think there's, one of the codes actually allows you to go over the 3-foot wall by special exception based on, one of the things being terrain of a property or some kind of hardship. I don't think it, if I remember correctly, did not apply any other conditions to it.
Whereas the frontage one did have specific conditions that have to be met. So, and they would, they would have to comply with those, that's not discretionary. Whereas the, oftentimes, it just says you can, you can obtain it by special exception, have some more subjective type of criteria.
I think one, just today's something that'd be important with that, that, you know, the sidewalk along the street is.
Name the street, please. Use nouns.
The sidewalk at the, along the street at the intersection of Meeting House and Montgomery. You currently have that, they have a short wall, and they have the slope up to where the existing plant yard is. The code, as it's written now, requires the new building to be set between 3 and 1/2 and 9 and 1/2 feet off of the front of the property. So for them to place the building at that location, that means they have to move it up closer to the sidewalk from where the current yard is, which then requires them to build that wall up against the edge of the sidewalk to meet the red grade throughout the site. So really, the only, if you want to avoid having that wall right up against the back of the sidewalk, you might have to have that building setback farther from the property, and you would end up kind of with a condition you have now, where you have shorter wall and then a slope.
Well, they could also excavate in to the hip, and they could have sidewalk grade access stores, commercial space. I mean, I mean, it's the same.
Right. I mean, that, right, then you'd be altering the back of the site. But the reason that they're having that wall right now is to match the gray in the back of the site and meet the setback requirement.
I think you should keep considering that the retail is the entire frontage of the first floor all the way around, so that you would have sort of like you do in the New Narbor Center, where at one end, you're sort of, you're almost kind of going into the basement to go into the storefronts, and that would be, you know, one side of the building is going to have to either be lower or higher.
We were through this before, because some of us didn't realize that when he said there would be sort of like a traffic barrier on a certain property here in the borough, and it didn't say the ugliest traffic barrier or the nicest traffic barrier, it just said traffic barrier, and some of us missed those details. And I would say that, so, I understand a retaining wall, I understand the use of a retaining wall, but of course, you know, I want to know, is it going to be an appropriate looking, or is this going to be just a wall of cement, of stucco and cement, where we say, two years from now, can we get a high school kid to put a mural up there because it's the ugliest wall in the borough of Narbor? It's, you know, I want to be very careful about what we're doing here and making sure that we have the details right, so that, you know, anybody, again, Sue Swift, my friend, lives like three doors from there, she's going to be on the phone, and I don't, I don't want to say it or I didn't ask the right questions, again.
So pause in a thought.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It seems like the, and if I'm wrong, my rec be, the issue is, do we want to send John Walco to this hearing to oppose it or to support it? Speaking for myself, I trust our zoning hearing board, and I think we should, you know, they've heard our comments, I think we should remain neutral, I don't think we should spend money on that.
And I don't think you need to spend money on it. If, if there are concerns or conditions, simply draft a letter to the zoning hearing board.
We can give them our criteria and then trust them to.
Say that we'd like to, and it could simply, that they could impose, the zoning hearing board could impose a condition that the material of the wall be approved by council during the land development process.
Just a quick follow-up and then I'm done. Can we, can then council people send John their thoughts to go in a letter to the zoning hearing board, or what's the procedure?
Yeah, what's the procedure?
I think that any conditions or any direction needs to be approved by council.
So you have to do that math.
Correct.
There you go.
What I was going to say, so what I see are two options. One is to say, we want you to excavate, we want it to be at grade on this intersection. The other would be to make a wall, which is currently a slope, appear more like a vegetated slope and less like a wall, and then.
Or make a wall, and I would say, why, give us a median, which is actually added value for them as well. Give us a really good, well, beautifully built median with trees in it, that'll also create more greenery and actually will create more visual cover of a wall.
So maybe what we do is we authorize here.
I like the excavation piece, I don't think we need another wall in the borough of Narbor.
There's just, it is, there is the possibility, there's, you could also have the shorter wall, the slope back, and you push the whole building back on the property, or reduce the size of the building, still get the same elevation, but you reduce your wall.
But that's closer to the houses, though, then.
It's not closer to the houses per se.
No, not per se.
But point of information, the planning commission specifically requested it be as close to the street as possible, as per the desire to make a walkable environment with inviting storefronts.
Oh, so it's a 10-foot wall, so that, yeah.
I think it's 10 feet.
Well, okay, it's the highest point, sorry, sorry. At the highest point.
I think I was going, in the highest one on the corner. I was.
So the point being, that already can, you know, that already can normalize that.
I think, everyone sees here, there were a lot of sort of competing desires that led to this current plan. There's definitely leeway to sort of reconfigure in some fashion, probably in a way that's fairly neutral to the developer, or some less neutral. But maybe what we do is put together a letter with sort of our brainstorming ideas, these things that we've discussed here at the table, we give it to the hearing board and let that. Michelle.
I'm listening, I'm listening. I don't know what you're going to say.
And say, you know, this is what we discussed, these are the alternatives that you may have not already thought of, and luck.
I would like that, I trust this.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Mr. Walco to prepare this letter.
Yes. Which would say what you're.
So I'm going to, I'm going to iterate the things here, so we'll take some notes, and then we'll sort of vote here and say, yes, we agree. We talked about trees being replaced near their original, as close to their original location as possible. We talked about the potential for a median with vegetation and possibly moving the trees to that location. We talked about the possibility of excavating so that the corner of Meeting House and Montgomery is at grade.
Is at grade.
We discussed potential of pushing the building back so that we could retain more of a grassy slope. We discussed potential of making the wall vegetated in a way so it did not appear to be a wall. We discussed, what was the last thing?
But some of those are just objectively not desirable.
All right.
So I don't like to pick all these options. So, for example, the planning commission already had a lengthy discussion with the developer about this project.
Yes, they did.
And they thought through many iterations of how, with developer about how this could go. And they came up, they were very happy, it seemed to me, with the, with the additional pedestrian circulation and the way, and it makes a lot of sense as someone who makes that walk to the Rite Aid frequently, you know, it's nice to have those additional options for, you know, for riding and walking.
Those children can throw things at their siblings.
So those are, so the design has already been worked through really well. So the idea of pushing the building back and having less parking and having, you know, making it, pushing the whole thing closer to the Narbor residences doesn't make sense to me, I don't, so I don't, while that was mentioned as an idea, I didn't hear it.
That's fair.
Something we wanted to clarify. I was thinking of something additive that would ameliorate and improve, improve upon something that's already there.
So state, John, do what I was doing back to me, and then John will take more notes.
Well, and so that, I mean, in that context, that's why I actually would prefer that John go and represent us to the zoning hearing board, so that he's there, active listening, listening, dialoguing if necessary with the zoning hearing board.
But we need to, if we're going to send him, we need to send him with either a support or.
Yeah, with, well, with, with the task to support with, with conditions. If that, if, you know, otherwise we would, I mean, we're just, if there's no kind of compromise, we're just going to say that we oppose it.
I would say that if this board has conditions, and I would be in contact with their attorney, Mr. Fromold, and he says, oh, we will agree to those conditions, I would just need to make sure that those conditions make it onto the record at the zoning hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's important.
I think it is important.
If he says, no, I don't want, we're not going to agree to those conditions, then I should appear and advocate for those conditions.
Right, got to need to go.
Because you can convey the feeling that, you can convey what you're hearing.
So I like that a lot.
But I'm not hearing any consensus as.
Let's get to the conditions.
It's just, there's somewhat 10 feet at the corner.
So Bob, if you could state your, the conditions, because I think you have a vision of what that is.
I mean, I, here's, here's the way I see it, I see a developer's created a plan. Whether I like it or don't like it is not really the situation here. It can, it follows the zoning. So it looks, it appears to most of us that it's done legally. So that, that's kind of where our likes and dislikes end. But on the other hand, they have this question of the special exception, which is an opportunity for them to request something special, as long as they meet the code. And in this instance, that it's this wall, this retaining wall, and I'm suggesting something that will, in my mind, alleviate the negative impact of the wall by creating an opportunity for additional green space that's in front, you know, in the foreground, that will shield, basically cover the wall with trees and vegetation from, you know, from the views, and also provide a nicer gateway. It's a value add for the people, for the residents and the developer who will be occupied that space, that create a safer pedestrian walkway, it slows traffic, it's kind of, you know, so you could, one could argue that a wall, that a tall wall increases the speed of traffic, because, because it's also demonstrated by traffic engineers, that when you put trees, it slows traffic. And if you don't have trees in your wall, it speeds, so that's, that's my, essentially my perception.
Okay, so John, tell us back what you just heard.
I just want to say, I mean, so I feel like what I heard you say, Bob, and I want to make note, see if everybody else is on board with that, is that you would push back or reject the idea of putting conditions that included pushing the building back or excavating the building, or because you feel like those design, possibilities have been investigated thoroughly by the planning commission, and those are, those, those, those sort of come out of the, we give like redesign, and we should not talk about those.
That's my hunch.
Right, okay, so that, I mean, and I.
And actually more costly than doing a median.
I think you're probably right. So then, the other set of, the other set of conditions would be accept the current design, but soften it, or improve it, or add some value, I thought could have two components, replacing all of those trees along Meeting House that are, that need to be removed to accommodate the retaining wall within 20 feet of their original location, I don't know, 15 feet, look at a map, within, not just, oh, as close as you can, but within X their original location, and the final wall composition and materials will be approved by council. And I think those two things could make it be conditions. But I would support.
I would agree to that. I mean, if you're going to get into essentially reworking the wall, you're essentially opposing at that time. I mean, there really should be just about the wall and not about the site itself. The, the trees, again, there are built-in conditions about tree replacement, so I think providing some special level of detail as to where those replacements can be is adequate and a reasonable condition. The only thing I would be cautious of is if, for some reason, that they were not able to be located within X amount of feet, well, what do they do now? As a, some sort of backup. The, the, the wall, again, they're, they're allowed to have a 3-foot wall. They want, at some parts, a 10-foot wall. So they're going higher. What makes council feel better about the increase in the wall? Is it they want some greenery in front of the wall, is it that they want to make sure that that wall, that they later approve of the materials of the wall? It really should be more about the wall itself. If you're getting into, well, let's get rid of the wall, then, then we're just opposing the special.
Maybe they, maybe they could do a green wall.
That's what I was just, you know. Yeah. 20 feet away, it looks the same. Okay.
So right now I have the, the condition, I guess the greenery buffering in front of the wall, again, I'm not sure if that would adjust the entire sidewalk plan, if we're talking about having the road, then a verb, then a sidewalk, then another verb, then a wall.
I'm talking about something that was in, that was studied by a traffic engineer like 20 years ago, that creates a median in my, Meeting House Lane's an extra wide cartway there. It's like super wide, Meeting House Lane is super wide here. And so there's room for a median, like one of those, one of those pedestrian medians that maybe has a, it has a, it has, what do you call a, for a pedestrian, for a pedestrian, it's called a sanctuary or protected area in the, you know, so you have trees, and then you have, you can walk across.
So this was the entrance.
Yeah, there. It's a, you know, it's a pedestrian-
So you're saying putting, putting the trees in the pedestrian median?
Yeah, in the median, which means you have shade, you have additional shade and you have additional canopy, and, you know, and, I mean, there's, there's a lot of reasons why it's important to keep-
Now, do we, now do we know that our traffic engineer would be okay with that? Or does the trees impose a safety hazard or some pressure?
It's the lady half of the class. I think Panani did it.
I know Panani did it. I know Panani did it.
We could advocate for this, you know, contingent on our traffic engineer agreeing that it kind of meets current standards, you know, things change over time.
Yes, true.
But we would be hopefully changed to be more pedestrian-friendly generally, and less cattle chute, and-
So, so is the ask then, that in exchange for permission to put in the wall, that we would like them to install a median on our property in the street? It's in, it's in Meeting House and the crosswalk, right?
John, how would that answer?
I just don't know, can we do that? I don't know.
I don't know.
The, the concern that I'm hearing from council is that they don't want the great wall of Narbor.
Correct, that's right.
And they want some, something that softens-
Yes.
-the view of a giant wall, and it's believed that if you were to be able to put some greenery at that corner, in the median, assuming that it's approved by the traffic engineer, as far as not impacting sidelines or any causing a traffic hazard, putting the median with greenery that's acceptable to the traffic engineer would soften the wall.
And it's not just an aesthetic issue, it's not just, it's not the aesthetic impact of the wall.
It should be related to the wall.
There needs to be a legal nexus to the law in order for us to be related.
What I'm saying is it changes the, it changes the dynamics of traffic flow, pedestrian access, everything, when you build a wall, it changes safety factors, if, when you, when you plant a tree, it changes safety factors.
You're correct, I think we're missing a point, and that point is that if we're gonna ask them to do it in this room, it needs to be predicated on something related to the wall, and that nexus is the fact that our issue is the appearance, and putting green in front of it relates to the appearance, traffic doesn't relate-
The nexus is there's X amount of vegetation and trees providing canopy to the street.
Currently there.
We wanna make sure that they maintain that amount of tree canopy on that street or in that area. They're removing tree canopy, they have to replace the tree canopy.
Right, right, right.
To put it in the wall, so they're replacing the tree canopy proximal to the, to where they've removed it.
Proximal.
All right, go ahead, teach.
And is this retaining wall vital to the building of this property? Is this retaining wall the most necessary, that, what I'm asking is like, can we build it, or is this just-
So this retaining wall is holding up the front end of the building.
Okay.
You got your answer.
Okay, so I'm all for the median wall.
But, so I'm gonna be standing on Meeting House, right? At the crosswalk, ten feet up is a wall, and then on top of the ten feet is, how high is the building?
So you are correct, so you will now-
That's two Cindy's, I'm standing on-
So what, what you would have- I mean, she brings up, you do bring up a good point, so you were gonna have, the wall would be approximately ten feet at the corner, and then you'll have the building sitting on top of that, which the building is allowed to be, because you measure the height of the building off the average grade of the property, so think somewhere in the middle of the parking lot.
Right, which is not at the top of the ten feet.
No.
Right, so the max, and then your max building height permitted is three stories of forty-five feet.
Okay, so wait, can, so this is me walking down Montgomery, I'm stretching, nobody wants to see this, I still am not reaching the top of the ten-foot wall.
It's a basketball.
It's a basketball, and then a forty to forty-five foot building, I'm sorry, I'm all for a median, but not for that monstrous wall.
Can I just pose a, a counterpoint? Until like five minutes ago, I was kind of like not buying the median idea, but to what you said, Bob, I mean, it's our neighborhood, you and me are the closest there, I get so many people complaining to me about walking and biking, exactly, and I think that a wall on a slope in exchange for something that beautifies it and helps with a major traffic problem, that's a win, that's, that's a good idea.
I feel like if you require the trees to be replanted proximal to their existing locations, you make the idea of the median seem like the most reasonable solution, actually.
Yeah.
Probably the most cost effective.
It looks like-
Where else are you gonna put them on top of the building?
Their draft plan has them actually going on the, on top of the wall.
Oh, they, they, oh, they have trees on top of the wall?
Yeah, so-
Oh, it's quite impressive.
They're gonna do anything sizable on top of the wall.
That, that interior sidewalk area is gonna have some additional sort of terracing and open space.
Oh, so that's, so that is pushed back.
They're not gonna do anything sizable on top of the wall, and also that, for me, that, that, that's my current intersection is, is on those, it's on that, right, it's on our plan by the way, to the canyon trail, it's important, I mean, unless, unless we're gonna do a roundabout there.
That's my idea, let's fight the long range about that.
Put me in the Wayback Machine.
All right, John, could you summarize for us, if we were to go to the zoning board with everything you've heard, what are you going to say, and we can vote to agree or disagree?
That there's a desire that any trees that are taken out be replaced as close as possible, so those trees that are there, with a desire to maintain the tree canopy along Meeting House.
They have to be canopy trees, not, not important as well, canopy trees.
That, that there's a desire that the, where Meeting House approaches Montgomery in order to provide a safe crossing, a pedestrian island median that will have additional greenery to, in order to break up the effect of a ten-foot wall at that corner, and to provide safer access to that intersection, if recommended by the traffic engineer, and as recommended by the traffic engineer.
Throw in there if possible canopy trees in the median, just to make everybody-
So what if the traffic engineer comes back and says, yeah, we can't do it?
Then it's, then it's, yeah. Well, hold on, he's, he's not done, he's got one more, that's an accord and one.
And that, the materials and the appearance of the wall be approved by Borough Council during land development.
And the trees be recommended by the shade, you know, by, approved by the shade tree commission?
We all, we're nodding.
For both on, either on the wall or-
Cindy has a little cold feet here, but I'm, I'm gonna take a motion to agree to what John wants.
I think the motion that we adopt the recommendations as articulated by our borough solicitor based on the feedback council just gave him.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded, no more discussion, all in favor. All right, are you in opposition? That's the record.
I'm in opposition.
If we could just say no, Cindy, then, then it would be reasonable to oppose, but you can't say no.
I know, we can, I said no.
All right, we have five in favor, one abstention. All right.
So there'd be three separate conditions essentially, materials, greenery, replacements as close as possible, canopy, trees, shade tree recommendation, traffic engineer recommendation.
Thank you, thank you, that was good work, guys. Is there any old business? Is there none?
But, if, just to clarify that motion, if, if the applicant does not agree to these conditions, would like me to, to appear to advocate for those conditions? Or otherwise, we're in opposition of the-
We're, we're, so move, you know.
Yeah, then we'd be in opposition.
Right. All right, I have one item of old business.
I have a new business, I do, I have a question for consideration, however, it is a personnel issue, so I would request that we stay for an executive session.
We can do this, okay. I would just like to remind the public and council that we do have a vacant seat on the zoning hearing board, and as you can see, the zoning hearing board is becoming an increasingly important part of our community in planning new developments and what things are gonna look like for another hundred years. If you are interested in being involved in that, please make application at the Borough Office either by email or in person, and we will consider your application.
Is there a deadline?
We hardly have no applications, so-
But we have an alternate, they're rolling.
But I would, I would love to have an applicant to consider for our next meeting.
I have another, I have another old business.
Yes.
Just the EAC, do we have candidates now for to make appointments to the EAC?
Did we receive one?
We have to make the change by ordinance.
Really?
Yeah, that came up as a little fiddly bit.
That's how we do it.
Would council like to make a motion to change the ordinance? We've already been, passed a resolution to do it.
Let's change it, yeah. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To make a motion to change the EAC from three to five members.
Can I just, and I'm not being oppositional, but don't we actually need to see a draft?
You have to have a person draft.
It'll all be prepared, because-
But before we can vote on the ordinance?
It's just, it's, the ordinance, it's, it's already exists, and it just says three members, and we're saying, it could say five.
I just need approval in order to draft it, if what I, and I can circulate it, if-
Can I just bring up another, because it came up, and I'm, again, not trying to be oppositional, we had a problem before where when we created this, we thought we would do it with three-year terms, but for the first initial outset, it would be one for one, one person in three years, one at two, one at one, and those details were articulated multiple points in the ordinance, now we're throwing two in, so we really should figure out how to, how we're gonna make this work.
How we step that, right.
That's why I just, I just wanted to see what John would write, I'm not, you know, I know there's a consensus, so-
Is that something that Finance Administration can review?
Or maybe John can just make a suggestion.
I need to circulate an ordinance, well, it doesn't need to go to any of the planning commissions, the ordinance that I had before council on July, we, we would need to be in the final form, we can't make changes to the ordinance at that time, so I'm gonna advertise an ordinance, I know South of the La Library, before that happens, council needs to be on the same page as to the terms of that ordinance, it's easy, three to five, it's an easy change. If we're gonna stagger terms to make sure that one term expires every year, if there's a desire to have those that are currently on serve longer terms, those that are coming on to expire sooner, if there's any discussion as to staggering terms, I can draft it, I just need the feedback on what council would like that, because we can't change it the day of.
Can I, well, I guess off the top of my head-
But I can circulate it ahead of time.
Yeah, sure.
Just to make sure everyone's okay with it.
What if we made it, what if we made it five years, just because, I don't know how else to stagger five people with three-year terms, and then we just bumped everyone who's on there up, and put the, the later people in line as if they were fourth and fifth, like, just the way we would do it for anybody, like, the equitable solution is the last in gets the shortest, but the odds are they would be reappointed if they're like the guy that got half a year, right?
Yeah, right, right, that's right.
I'm just, equitable?
Everybody's nodding. There you go, John, so the direction is-
Something else, I can-
Is the wall allowed for a five-year term?
I'm unaware, I, I don't have the ordinance primary.
Miami Christian has four-year terms, so it's six.
Or is it?
Nine is five.
There are others that have five, four is five.
Let's assume it's fine, that's a good assumption.
Whatever, if it doesn't allow it, again, I can get that to council, because what I'm hearing is whatever the max term that is permitted, just, and I think we established now that everyone's got staggering terms, just move everybody up two, two years essentially, because we're adding two.
Yeah, so Jesse now has a five, the other has a four, or no, Jesse has a four.
Four.
The guy that was last in now has the five, the third party has the three, and then we appoint a two and appoint a one.
Right.
So whoever's first appointed is the longest term.
Well, Jesse was appointed at three, I don't remember exactly who, then Person B at two, and Person A at one, but then A's term expired, and they were reappointed to a three, so that party should be the five.
I'm sorry, listen.
It's what I do for a living, it's-
Can we do that?
Do it every day, you can't be bad at it.
No, Jesse's at four, that's the-